Didn't Catherine tell us last night that Sue already works forty hourly?
She's in the fire department for those additional six hours, or eight hours.
Yeah, right.
Well, that's right.
So she's in the fire department, right.
So that's gonna be backfilled.
That's gotta be backfilled, yeah.
Now, how can we, oh.
Yeah.
Theoretically, that doesn't require another, any additional dollars. Instead of paying Sue, you pay Mary.
But someone's still adding six hours.
Somebody's gonna have to pick up.
Oh, the six hours of work.
Looking back to our big budget.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're still gonna have six hours.
I think the difference is.
If we're gonna spend this much time on every red line item in this thing, we're gonna be here till midnight.
Well, I would say, I would put out, though, that we have to have a real focus going forward. This is not any, a statement at you, Kevin, because again, you've been here for two months. But we tend to say, we're going to do this for efficiency and savings, and then it never comes to pass. And all we do is increase the base budget. So if we say we're gonna hire people because certain buckets are gonna go down, and those buckets never do. Or in a department, we cut hours and the monies then should go down, we should save. And we make decisions based upon that. And then it never comes to pass in the budget. That can't continue.
And that's where I think having full-time eyes with a frankly more engaged board are going to help us start. This is a gigantic ship. We can't turn it in one month or two months.
It's just if we are, if we vote on four things where we're gonna have savings. We should be bringing that back up, the same to departments. Next year, you're gonna have savings in these. Or if you don't have savings in those, you're just not gonna get those monies. So you're gonna have to find other ways to save.
This is gonna look a little different next year in that things we voted on increasing this year, we're not gonna say. And you get another increase on the same thing next year.
There's, yeah, and I think there's just, there's two things. It's the financial benefit of putting in here and reducing over here. Sometimes you don't want to see that reduction because by increasing here, you'll be able to grow capacity so you can take on other.
But maybe we can't take on other. You know, it's at some point saying services can keep increasing, sure, and that's great. But you have to weigh that against the cost of doing that. It's still growing the pie. You might be a little faster, you might be able to get your information in in the field, you know, maybe a day earlier. I'm not sure. Are people screaming for that? Are people saying, oh, my gosh, because we didn't get our permit in that night, you know, the information? It's holding up, you know, our whole process. I would say it's more the way our committees meet, and they take a month to re-meet again that delays the process.
We have a reputation in town, I've heard it from a number of people, that it's not easy to deal with the process. I don't wanna get into a big thing about that.
I agree with you.
We're looking for it very much. Doing business in Toshville is one of the things that's going to change. And as part of revitalization piece, Kevin, I know from our conversations, you're very keen on this. Right now, we're trying to get a budget out. Once we get the budget actually sort of published and finalized, then we're gonna get some breathing time in April. We may start talking about some of this. I think some of it's gonna take time for you to kind of sort through. All these things we keep throwing out as priorities, for you to sort and say, here's where I'm starting. And once the budget is done, I think us having a meaningful conversation on what priorities you proposing you do and how, and us getting on board with you.
Sure, I appreciate that. Absolutely. No, I think it's good. We'll obviously, you know, must add by now. We're gonna be talking a lot.
So are we okay with forty hours?
Yeah, I'm okay for now. I'd like to give him leeway to make things happen. If there's a lot of shifting and reorganization and idea sharing for now, I'm okay. But I'd like to come back next year and.
My comments are more of a broad, not just about this position, but just when it comes to new hours being added in. I told all departments, I'm not gonna necessarily advocate for this department or that department because it's not fair to you, it's not fair to me, it's not fair to the town. But just more of a broad conversation. When those asks come in, you know, as I better understand how the teams operate, I could, a year from now or eight months from now, I'll be able to better say, well, we're creating efficiency by changing the departments and the unit structure. So you don't need those hours. You know, we can have those conversations.
Absolutely. And I just, I wanna really support the point that you're making, man, is that you gotta be really, both a high eye and a low eye on where this little increase is coming from. And changing the processes will give us the opportunity, needs to give us the opportunity, to find some, what I would call, structural changes.
We just wanna make sure it's not, you know, death by a thousand cuts where, you know, you use the mantle of efficiency or better service, and it just means the price keeps going up, so.
Well, the other thing, too, is we've had cases where, I mean, one of the issues we've been talking about is the police department. And they went and hired two new officers and cut, yeah. And I understand that hasn't really kind of come to fruition because they're still figuring out shifts and so on and so forth. But my expectation is by next year, I would expect to see something that is saving us five figures over what it would have been otherwise. And we've gotta get that together.
Yeah, I even, and I'm not sure, we could talk more with them a lot later. I won't hold it up now. But they seem to be seeing increases, decreases in their overtime. They have experience from the last four months showing that overtime is going down.
There's no question. They told us that the other night.
Yet, not a dollar is taken out of overtime.
But the point is, the trend hasn't gone far enough. The overtime going down is gonna continue.
Yeah, but if you've had four months' experience and it is going down, then I would hope we would have had some decrease in that bucket.
You think we should anticipate the decrease?
In the budget.
Not the actuals.
The actuals will come in and then we'll be.
Yeah, but I mean, if it, for four months, they've seen a decrease, and that's what the hiring of the two was.
I don't have any.
We did some level of decrease, even five thousand dollars, you know, out of a hundred and eighty, or whatever it was, a hundred and sixty, a thousand.
Before we get to that with police, we can revisit.
Because I trust them that they will be able to, to do what they said, and so we should see a little bit of that in the budget.
Hope so. That's what I told them the other night. I wanna see the bottom line decrease.
So on page three.
If you're comfortable, let's go to page three.
I've got nothing here.
Which budget?
Page three.
Page three in the paper conference. It's the treasurer collective department. We've just been talking about.
Page four.
Page four's town hall expense, town hall buildings, PEG and town clerk. The only comment I would make regarding PEG and cable is, and Kevin, this is kind of a, not a cost thing, but a getting value for our expenditure. I love the people who are involved. Brad is great, Bill is great, and so on. But we're not getting the level of service, I feel, that we're paying for to Bauxford. So that'll be something for us to follow up. That forty-two thousand five hundred.
We're paying incredible amount of money.
We have enough times when something doesn't happen, the radio.
For the cable.
Oh, for the cable, cable.
The cable access, yeah.
Okay.
So that's just something to make a note for afterwards.
Forty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
I don't see us trying to negotiate.
Is there a desire to do it in-house, or would you wanna find another party to outsource it to?
I'd love to find a way to do it in-house if we could. First of all, that's something we might be able to look for a grant from. There are various possibilities. But I think, I think there's some advantages of doing more limited operations. I said, we're not trying to run a station that's running all the public access stuff and so on all the time. We basically need to run it at certain times. We have a channel, but we don't use it all the time.
What gets spelled besides our meetings? Besides ours?
Sports games as well?
Some sports games, when it's requested, and it often isn't. Used to do more. They used to do wrestling matches and basketball games and football games.
And that really does?
I don't think so.
But that's something that Bauxford's been doing.
They're supposed to be doing that, and then occasionally we have the Holiday on the Green, that sort of thing. They come around and they do those things.
Say, you know that?
Well, I don't know if that particular one, but the Veterans Day thing or something, you know, they, they have been filming those. But that's part of the agreement, that they would do some ten of those a year or whatever.
It's pretty worth looking at.
I've been back to baseball games on recently.
Kevin, I just wanna put that on the review sometime before next budget season. I have a couple ideas, too.
Yeah, we need a little more control over things like meetings and so on. And for reasons I don't understand, it seems to me just a tremendous problem to get both video and audio consistently working.
Well, Bill Whiting ran that whole thing by himself for years.
The cable.
They're nice guys. I have nothing against that.
If you ask Kevin about it, if we wanna do it in-house, he's gonna say, good luck.
Good luck, oh, yeah.
He couldn't get anybody.
Have we made it through the town hall expenses here?
We went down, we're on it, we're on it right now. We're on page four.
Essentially, that means that we agreed with the, with the red items, right?
Yes.
That's what it means.
And just a note about the facility management, if I could. So we've got thirty-five thousand now going for facility management. That has to free up a lot of time of everybody else who's managing your facility. Are we reflecting on it here?
I'll tell you, Lin, where I think it's gonna save money, because I suspect that the level of facility management is so low generally, that this is in one sense, an added expense. But I can promise you that having focused facilities management, by the time you get a year or two down the road, you will save that multiple times over on preemptive repairs.
That should be on our list to take a look at, to see what it's costing us. Because it's in each budget, isn't it?
So that, those line items are not for the actual manager of the project. This is for someone to come in and look at capital projects, look at preventative maintenance, and look at repairs that are necessary. What happens right now is the chief or librarian, whoever it might be, if a pipe breaks, they're calling, like I have a chief for the boiler, I've worked with Donna on Friday and over the weekend, and then today, trying to line up vendors to come in. Thank goodness we had Paul, because Paul basically took the blow by the horns and said, alright, send me the proposal you got, chief. I'm gonna call two other vendors to come in and get proposals. And then we'll look at the scope of work, look at the cost, and then we'll basically, we'll implement it from there. And meanwhile, he's working with Donna directly on the procurement component of it, so that we're doing the bidding appropriately based on the dollars it's gonna cost.
So we should see a decrease in those budget line items in each of the departments because it is done on bolt and coordinated with vendors. We should have some savings by coordinating that and bidding it out, as opposed to individual departments trying to find whoever's available at whatever time.
It will depend on what type of repairs and issues arise, but we're also investing in preventative maintenance, which hasn't happened in the past, which will prolong the life of our assets as well.
Facility dude is part of it.
To John's point, this won't be a one-for-one dollar where if we spend a dollar on Paul, we're gonna see a reduction of dollar.
No, I'm not saying that. But again, this was sold in part on, besides the preventative, which is so key, because this is a new building and we wanna maintain it, that everybody was going out there and individually working with vendors and not getting a good price. They said, we're gonna have some preferred vendors to come in if there's electrical or plumbing. Well, no, it ties into this because this facility dude does the bidding and has preferred vendors at better prices.
Give an example, Masco with their water treatment plant, they had an issue with the valve bearing. And what happened was, it was not found. When it finally went, the bearing took out the shaft, the shaft took out a motor, the motor took out the housing. And what would have been a fifteen-hundred-dollar bearing repair ended up costing about thirty-five thousand dollars. That's an example of where preemptive maintenance by somebody who was paid to look at it and know when they had to do inspections would have helped.
And so that preemptive look should directly be seen in the line items where those little repairs grow into big repairs.
They eventually should feed back into a common place where we know, we should see those go down.
We should see those numbers, the repair numbers go down.
Including, as you point out, many of the budgets have a line item for maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. It should be able to come down because theoretically, their maintenance is more than it should be because we're not doing good preventative maintenance.
And we're not doing good bidding.
The other side of it is, though, that the police chief is not spending time trying to figure out how to get a boil. I'm not sure how you justify the value of those.
It's difficult to uncover every one of those dollars, okay, and show.
I guarantee they're there. We've already, at Masco, doing the assessments that we have done, which have been part of the facilities expense, saved lots of money on identifying things that, you know, a hundred thousand dollars of repair probably saved a couple million in failures that would have happened within a year or two. It, long story short, it takes a while for that to start happening. But when you get ahead, you start doing the repairs, and then you have a process by which you're constantly looking at them. It's amazing. A small tear in a rubber roof, bang, you fix it right away, and nothing happens.
I'll just mention, too, on that line item, that the initial conversations with Paul, he's seventy-five dollars an hour, he estimated twelve hours a week. If you think about, if you take on all the buildings in the town, less the schools, obviously, you have one or two major issues on top of his regular preventative maintenance or shoveling the walks, whatever it might be, you can eat up those twelve hours pretty quick. Nonetheless, what we did is we actually took, if you take seventy-five times twelve, it's forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. We're at twenty-five, basically split that with a thirty-five thousand dollars budget, so it's keeping within our means.
So we don't have enough to cover him full-time, is what you're saying?
Twelve hours for now. We're not, in our budget, we will not have him at twelve hours. It, it might happen one week for twelve hours, but we gotta compensate for it, yeah. Otherwise, it'd be over.
And I, I don't quibble at all about the salary for him. I think that's absolutely essential. It's just that we should see the benefit of that in other line items. We should see those repairs go down.
You're right, we do it, and we gotta be diligent about looking for it.
Identifying it, and if it's not there, then we gotta figure out how to do something different than twenty.
Let's see if we can keep moving here. Time's flying.
Page five, any comments?
Building rental, I think that was for Masco, isn't it? Town meeting at Masco, right?
Yes, that's the clerk's.
I had a question mark, but that's the clerk, and that was for renting the Masco space, I think.
That's correct. We added an additional hundred fifty to that because that's for, it's a hundred fifty dollars rent a fee each time we give it this three elections this year.
That's, that's less than labor to set a proctor school up.
Oh, yeah.
It might be, I don't know.
It is, oh, yeah.
They had to put down the floors and the chairs, Kevin, oh.
Maybe the schools are picking it up, but, yeah.
No, they, again, it's the fact that we're a member town is why that's so cheap. If you were renting that to put on a concert from somebody outside, it would be considerably more expensive, but.
I'm okay with page six.
Continuing to move on there.
There might be a lot, let me sit on page seven.
Well, we've already discussed Lynn's point, which I think is well-taken. So the question, Kevin, is, can they pull down the overtime a little bit more in anticipation of increased efficiencies by shift management? Given they have two new officers, can we pull that down a bit more?
So the actual costs are, to date, for a few months' worth of actuals, came in at about twenty-six thousand. The chief and the captain have been navigating that there's still too many unknowns. We necessarily drop that below a certain number, and then we can't fill shifts. So they're conservatively keeping that one sixty-eight until they have, as they explained it, I think, a two-years' worth of actuals to actually say that, yes, the overtime, as they planned, are gonna be less than what we expected, because they only have a partial three or four months. And they're trying to make sure that they have enough to cover it.
Let me ask a question. What if we lowered that, I'm just gonna pick a number out of the air, to one sixty? It's a thirty-year, twenty-five thousand. If we do something that sort of says, it's not going up, and here's a little sign, we're expecting it to go down, and you get a year with just a tiny bite, is that something that would be, again, I realize we're talking more symbolism, but it will show up next year when we're looking at this, and we'll probably say, oh, yeah, we really wanna push this trend further.
Overall, the department's at seven-point-nine-nine percent increase.
Yeah, so.
So maybe it's down to one fifty.
Can I take this, this particular thing? I appreciate it and putting this together. This, the way I read this, and I'm not sure how I deal with this included. If I take out that included stuff, the way I see it, if you, if you take the difference between this column and this column, it's all in the same year, it's costing us seventy thousand dollars more, according to what they put here, to have the two officers versus the not-two officers. So it's costing us that in salaries plus pension and health insurance and OPAP. So it's, it's not a break-even, based on what, based on this piece, without going into all of these.
They, they made, they made the big point about the fact that we, we can eliminate a lot of overtime pay if we hire these two guys.
And we have an overtime improvement here.
It shows.
But when you add all of this up.
It still costs more.
It still is costing more in actual dollars, real dollars now, plus benefits.
How, where is there a drop in the overtime? Because I see in fiscal twenty, a hundred and sixty-eight, four fifty-eight. And in fiscal twenty-one, I see a hundred and sixty-eight, four fifty-eight.
That's where there should be a drop.
Overtime, fifty-one, three-ten, overtime, regular police went from two-two-two to one sixty-eight.
Right.
I don't see any of those numbers on here.
Oh, on this? I'm sorry, I was, I see what you're saying.
I don't see those numbers. I don't see a two-two-two anywhere.
So you have the, what it was the prior two years, the two officers came in, they reduced it down to one sixty-eight. These are the actuals for a few months' worth of actuals, and this level.
The last time Catherine talked, we asked her several times if that was twelve-thirty-one or just a couple of months, and she said that's twelve-thirty-one.
The officers were in, as I understand it, the academy and else. So the actual impacts of having them available is not reflective outside the last few months, as I understand it.
Do you know how many months that represents?
Not a full seven month, not a full six, I know that, maybe three, maybe four, maybe, I couldn't tell you definitely. I know it's not a full six, and I know it's, it's, so.
So let's say it's a third, just three months, half of that, that'd be a hundred and four thousand for the year.
Again, I, again, tops still fair. I don't know if they're available for that and the overtime costs associated with that. There's a lot within here. Public safety is one of those items where we want, well, I shouldn't say it's one, everything we wanna be is accurate as possible in here. I just might, based on what the chief and captain have advocated so far, in that line item, it's probably conservative. But it's gonna give us that safety net in the event that we are not doing what they said they're gonna do, and there's additional costs, so we still, nonetheless.
What might end up in trouble?
That's the overtime. We still have it. The hope is that we come in less than that, and it goes back into the pre-camp.
Fifty-one, three-ten.
Yeah, that's where it is.
Just because it's there, doesn't mean you're gonna spend it, I guess.
Can I suggest two things here, Kevin? First of all, I wouldn't mind a small symbolic drop there, just to kind of send a message. The second thing is, I realize that fifty-one XXXX of the red there, the police fare overtime, isn't there. What I would, I would love to see that as a separate item, because that's an all-hands-on-deck. It's not a filling in shifts, that's an everybody extra. We should find out how much that is so that the fare is separated from the ongoing shift management for regular shifts throughout the rest of the year, so that we can get those overtime numbers separated.
Doesn't the fare pay for the overtime?
If they do, that's fine. It's in this, it's right here. Do they pay it all?
They do, but there's some time, there's a need, as I, again, as I understand, I haven't been here through the process physically. But as I understand, it's been told to me, there are times when they do need to put some officers on for overtime. I know, but there's the request in here as well for some administrative support to be physically at the window during the fare, where otherwise, there would not be a building, for example.
So let's separate that so we know how much our officers are committed to that, and how much the fare is paying us. Because if there's a gap on that, by the way, maybe we should talk to Jamie.
They reimburse us on, on, on the fare. But like I said, there might be an instance where, I'll try to get as much information on that front as I can.
The problem, the problem in my mind, however, is still the bottom line, which is an eight-plus percent increase. That, that, I just can't understand that. It's, it's a big increase on a big number. So my sense is, we need to understand more why the police need to go up over eight percent.
Well, the regular wage.
Is that a reasonable question?
Because of a hundred and twenty-six thousand.
We're not gonna get the answer now, then. It's a reasonable question?
Sure. They have a time.
They do a great job, by the way. We all agree on that.
They've answered, I just don't think they've, there's still some questions. You're soft to FinCom, myself, that we still haven't had full clarity on.
I've sat in a couple of meetings, listening to Gary justifying some of these numbers, and he's not been through this stuff either. And I can tell you, he doesn't do a very good job of explaining some of these line items. He doesn't have the experience. I'm concerned about, about that, okay? And, and Kevin, I, I think if you sit down in the beginning, you're gonna get the same kind of mumbo jumbo. It's too, it's too complicated at this point in time, and there are too many unknown. We don't know where the power is.
Jonathan and I have talked about trying to understand it as best we can.
Yeah.
There's a lot in it. I can't sit here today and say I can, it's probably the most complicated components of budget that I don't have an understanding of.
It's been two months, what's going on?
There's a lot going on in this department, numbers-wise.
But like I said, I, you know, for purposes today, just knowing, based on conversations, what the, the higher level, without getting in the weeds of what represents, why I'm breaking things out, the one sixty-eight is a number to basic, they're carrying that over for two years. Last year, they had it, this year, they had it. And then looking, based on the actuals after this year, they'll make appropriate adjustments after two years of actuals.
Well, it went up eight percent because we were saying it's like a hundred and twenty-two thousand overall this went up, and the new offices are a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
I'm willing to give him a little time to work out stuff in between, but I'm still thinking that we ought to put at least a symbolic reduction on the overtime. I'm sorry, Dave.
Yeah, thought I'm hearing from the FinCom, they're very confident in reducing the overtime.
Yeah.
Will then reduce the budget overtime to what they say.
Yeah.
You know, to put the, keep the pressure on, keep the focus on, if for some reason they go over, well, that's what we, FinCom has reserve funds and so forth.
Yeah, exactly.
It keeps the pressure on furthermore. It doesn't drive that additional cost to the taxpayer.
Yep, I'm in favor of that.
And I, I think that makes a lot of sense, because, you know, when the pressure's on, you find a way, don't you?
Yeah, I mean, I personally.
We all did.
Given the fact the appropriation for overtime was one sixty-eight, four fifty-eight last year, and I would, I mean, I even see, again, I'm not talking with them directly, but why couldn't that be one fifty? Let's just put something in that's a.
Hundred.
Yeah, it's on target for a hundred and four thousand right now. Because if this is three months of actuals.
Oh, you're taking this, yeah. But I'm trying to do is take the, take the proposed thing and give them some space a year, but push them down to one fifty so we're at least clear.
That's plenty of room, because the actuals are right here. So we know what they're gonna come in at.
We also don't know, these may be seasonally affected, and we don't have data on that. That's the one problem.
Maybe a little bit, but one fifty is very doable.
If we took eighteen thousand out of it, we'd be making a clear statement, we're expecting this to go down and expect it next year. What do you think?
I think you're gonna have a tough time getting clear answers out of Gary. I think you may have to spend time with the chief to get the real answers. And he, and he's gonna insist that Gary.
And he's gonna push it back to Gary, because he's trying to hand everything off to Gary, so just, you'll have to do it.
Let's just do what we can to keep the pressure on and make sure that they can come through with something.
You know, they saw the backup. If they do a credible drop in this month, that's, it's okay.
Let me ask a question of the board. Did I just toss a number out? I'm not making a motion. What do you think about lowering that one sixty-eight, fifty-eight to one fifty as a way of making a statement? And the fact, as David pointed out, there is a reserve fund if something really unusual happens, but we certainly would expect it to go down. That's above what you calculated, Chevillian. It's below what they're asking for. You kind of get a year to work this out, and we're saying, we're paying attention. Is that something worth considering?
They shouldn't have a problem that either, because they keep saying.
I would feel more comfortable with a hundred.
Just making it a hundred?
Yeah.
Instead of a hundred and fifty.
I'll bet you.
That's a big, big jump.
You got a couple things, though. You got the twenty-six going on. You got the fact that if you, if you, if you take sixty-eight out of it, it's still not as much as the additional officers are costing us. And the explanation was that we would cover the cost of the additional officers with overtime, whatever the reasons were, including benefits. And benefits we haven't talked about, because they're not in here anyplace. So the suggestion I would have is a hundred.
I wouldn't go that low, only because their actuals are running over it, and as we talked, there might be a seasonal component. I don't know if they're steady for every, every month. So I'd go a little above that.
How about one twenty is a medium?
Pick it up.
One twenty.
Also note, this is gonna, all this section's gonna be reflective of the new collective bargaining agreement, which we don't necessarily know exactly what that's gonna look like.
But that's what the reserve is for.
It is, but that's for, specifically for salary. For instance, OT, there's like, for instance, with the reserve officers and the full-time officers, there's a, in the contract, a fifty-fifty split relative to picking up overtime shifts. The reality is that reserves are not picking up enough shifts. They're trying. They've got documents to show that. We've had a lot of conversations around this.
Yeah.
So they're going more close to a sixty-seventy to thirty-fourty split, which means that the cost for overtime goes up because you're not paying it to reserve officers anymore. If the trend continues because people are aging out of the reserves, they're retiring. DePon, for example, did that a couple of years ago. Got a couple of other people who we know are gonna probably be coming off of that. The list, in essence, shortens to a certain degree. And so the cost on the OT, just by that dynamic, it's not, again, it's, the split by itself might drive some of that cost up as well. It might not be as that one-for-one again, because of the, I'm getting a little lightheaded because I didn't lunch. Sorry, I've got a granola bar.
Go get a granola bar. I'm, I'm about one twenty-five. Here's my sense, let me just ask. My sense is that we were kind of interested in maybe lowering something and making a statement about this, and I'm, so I want.
A reasonable, a reasonable, a number that's reasonable. I mean, it's not the matter of lowering it. It's something that's reasonable. One twenty-five. It's something that's reasonable, one twenty-five.
One twenty-five would be, would you, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yep, so, when Kevin comes in, I don't have to vote for that, or whether we're just going to have.
I don't know whether we have to vote for it, officially, what was nice to do years ago, is we would vote on the various, after we got done discussing it and saying what it is.
The changes.
We vote for the police budget, vote for this, vote for that, it's been a while since we did that, you know, but we used to do that.
Well, we're not making that many changes, so.
No, 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 I, and here's what we're doing, and I think you made the point, when you said that there were just even four or five things we could pick away at in a fairly meaningful way, here's one, it's probably the biggest single dollar, but, it's saying we're paying attention, and, by the way, it addresses one apart department to let them know, it's kind of a message to them, whether the highway department ever sees this or cares, it's different, but it's gonna tell one department if we go that way.
And hopefully keep us a little bit off the eight percent.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and this is another one of those things, that, when we're being presented with, if you hire two officers, then the overtime's gonna go down, did they not know that the shift was shift, that the percentage was shifting, did they not see that as an issue, to know what was coming?
Oh, I think they didn't.
So that the overtime wouldn't really be.
I think they did, but I.
I mean, what, so what I would like to do is, I think we're in agreement, you probably were out, Kevin, and we basically hijacked that under, and said, we would like to make that increase for this year, so we're gonna increase the amount for line fifty-one, three-ten, the police wage overtime, regular police, we would like to take it from one sixty-eight, four fifty-eight to one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That was not a happy sign.
I'm just hungry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's.
My emotions are coming out a little bit, I would ask, if I could, with all due respect, I know we have a meeting next week, hopefully we're in a schedule. Let me get in the weeds with this one, because I'd rather not short changes for, symbol is important, symbolism is important, but I think, you know, when it comes to public safety, there's expectations in this community, I wanna make sure that we, even if it's a budget number at the end of the day, the reality is, the actual number, this isn't, they're not gonna take advantage of a hundred and sixty-eight and spend that up there, because that line item is there, other line items within our budget, someone might have that opportunity, this is a real number based on actual cost, and if we need to fill a shift, we need to have the ability to do that, my hope is, is that that twenty-six continues, we're at seventy-five at the end of the year, and then that would be great, then we have two years of actuals, next year at this time, when we're sitting down, we'll point to that and say, alright, two years of actuals, hopefully the new chief and, and the support team come into the room, and they say, that's, that's the number, if you give me an opportunity to that, before we land on that.
Come back next week, know where our emotions and thinking lie.
I believe that they expect that overtime to be around seventy-five thousand, okay, but I'm not sure that's gonna pay for the two additional policemen.
I appreciate.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Appreciate the opportunity.
In the overall, they're.
I wanna make sure we get it right, yeah.
So come back next week, and we, next week, when we have our meeting on that, Kevin, so we'll go on, you know where we're at, let's continue, on to the next page, possibly?
Could I just offer this thought, Kevin?
Sure.
The idea is, if we put something in the budget more than it needs to be, it's clearly something we have to tax, and it also puts pressure on the two and a half, the other departments.
It absolutely does, I understand, I wholeheartedly understand that.
I'm sure you do.
It's good to go over the discussion with that number, letting them know that's where the feeling is, because we just added.
Yeah, in your discussion, we're feeling uncomfortable with one twenty-five.
Are you meaning I need a cavalier of subs to run the budget number?
Yeah, no, no, got it, got it.
As Lynn points out.
Well, it tells them that we're watching it, that's what it does.
As, as Lynn made the point, they came in and justified the two extra officers with an argument saying it would cost less.
Put up or shut up.
That's right.
So, okay, let's move on.
Well, I didn't say shut up, we're police.
No, you didn't. Put up or, thank you for, I don't mean to put up or shut up, but it's like, we're gonna ask you to help us manage this and so on, I'm, it's not to be against the police, it's trying to be for the taxpayer in this case.
I just have faith they can do what they said, and they're on target for it.
If I thought they couldn't possibly do it, I would not support the number, but that's.
How about additional money for clerical help for the fire department? Line item fifty-one, one forty, page eight.
Six thousand, sixty-eight hundred, yeah.
She wants sixty, sixty-nine hundred dollars for additional clerical help.
Did you say why the clerical need was going up?
Well, there's, they have, she has, so basically, qualified firefighters, we're, there's a proposal to add some additional coverage on that.
Yeah.
We're also working with the ambulance services, and there's, we, although we pay our third-party provider when they're doing those runs, there's still some tracking and coordination with the third-party provider, with the billing component of it, you know, they're, it's seven hours to nine hours, is what she's.
It's, it's nine hours, that's step seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Six hours to nine hours.
Plus, six hours for one person, plus nine hours for another?
No, she only has one part-time person.
Yeah, that's all she's got.
I had two, Diane's on.
Oh, she's two?
She used to have two, because Diane was on it, and she no longer does it, because she has more hours here.
Yeah.
So they have to fill that.
And you look at Sue, you look at Sue in the assessor's office, if she gets the six hours there, Diane's no longer there, instead of having to split two people, part, very part-time, she'll have to be able to hire one person part-time to support the.
She did make that point.
But it still went up fifteen hours, so even, you know, I could understand.
Six and nine is fifteen.
It was, it was always fifteen, they just split it with two people.
I know, but then it wouldn't be going up, you wouldn't be looking for extra money, you would combine it with one person, and they'd get fifteen hours versus two people, adding up to fifteen hours, so this is an additional fifteen hours, it looks like, that's being asked.
My question too would be, the potential efficiencies, two people coming in there, I don't know about you, but it takes a little while to kind of, you know, ramp up, catch up, and so on, and could one person do in twelve hours what it took two different people collectively to do with overlap in fifteen?
Good question, that's all.
It's fifteen hours to nineteen hours, so she's still part-time, or he or she will be part-time, but again, it's a new hire, at least for a part-time, if not, if Sue's position transitions, then it'll be two-fold, that'll be one part-time person, one hire that she'll need to make there, to take all those hours.
So, I, I'm sorry, that reading was right, grade five, step nine, six hours, grade five, step seven, nine hours, so is it?
So we have the over-budget ask request, and the depth, the explanations built into that?
Six thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine divided by fifteen hours, we, oh, fifteen times fifteen.
So we're going from fifteen, currently the fire department has fifteen hours of administrative support per week for a department that responds to the public twenty-four hours a day, administrative assistant responsible for leading payroll, issuing permits, paying bills, reconciling accounts, compiling reports, interacting with the public, and several other duties, the increase to four hours is essentially the need to increase in administrative duties at the fire department.
Okay, maybe it's just written, done, in a different way.
Where's it interact with the public, is that individual based at the station?
Yes, she shares an office with chief, which in and of itself is, I think, somewhat problematic, but that's fine, it is what it is.
It is problematic, that's the, that's where it's.
That's where we're set up, and chief manages it really very, very well, there's a lot of work that chief does, grant writing, for instance, that is above and beyond the standard, and she does it tremendously, we look at.
Does a good job.
Yeah, no, I, I'm fine with it at four hours, it was looking like fifteen hours, and then just running away with the job.
Yeah, that's good, okay, it's a puff puff, it's still part-time, but it's puff puff, so.
The next one is the sixty-five thousand, did you sense, did FinCom talk about that, wasn't it?
Not.
No, we didn't do fire department.
I'm interested in what they're gonna say on that, but I certainly am in favor of getting twenty-four-seven.
They are.
Owe it to our town.
I'm, I'm almost convinced that they're in favor of it, because she made a big point out of the fact that she takes in a hundred and sixty-three thousand a year in fees, and it goes to the general fund, and FinCom is, part of my suggestion was, why can't we take some of that money and take it out of the general fund, and make an enterprise fund out of it, or something, so that she's got access to that money.
Why doesn't it go back into the fire budget?
It's all part of the town, we bill as a town, we get back as a town, and it's written out to the town, it's not written to the fire department, unless we set up the fund to do it.
One of the recommendations from the auditors report, I believe, is to actually set up a separate revenue account for that.
It would make sense to be able to track.
We're not there yet, we haven't done that, but I know Catherine, if she was here, she'd probably speak to it better than I could, because that's something that's part for department.
And the FinCom is totally in favor of that kind of thing, if Atlanta makes this.
Absolutely.
The thing to then, if it's a separate fund, that it should be tracked where the expenses are associated with that, because there are real costs.
Oh, sure.
In the additional travel and wear, and tear on the equipment, just so that we have a complete picture of, of what the bottom line is by providing that service.
Yeah, I think.
One sixty-three is not without expense.
Yeah, no, obviously it's not, yeah, obviously there is some, but, anyway, I, I agree with that, I agree that there's, some is expensive, twenty-five percent are calls that we get reimbursed on, of all the mileage on the truck, that we take twenty-five percent of that, put it against the one sixty, those are accounting issues that we can look at in the future.
We can still say it's a town, that's something you have to do, but at least you're getting a complete picture.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that one.
This is a, this is a big ticket item here, as far as dollars are concerned, we talk about them taking the ambulance out, the service zone plan for the town specifically says that the fire department will seek to remain in the town, and have the ambulance company do the transport, so that we keep our employees in the town for emergencies, whether it's a fire, or another medical call, or whatever it is, but, it's a big problem to be billing like this, meaning that we are out of the town doing ambulance runs, where we should be depending upon this private company to do it, now, we should also understand that when those ambulance runs are done, if you're not on Medicare, the bills that people are getting are unreasonable, and I, this, this is two months ago, I had two different ones over one, where people told about how much more they were getting billed because they were having Housefield do it, now, that comes down to, what does the fire department say, and how hard do they work to get the job done by the ambulance company, and that comes back to our negotiating with the ambulance company, or whatever, finding out why, the rumors are, and, but it's also, you'll find it in the, in the twenty-four-seven fire study, that there's a lot of cancellations that are being done by the fire department to the existing ambulance provider that we have a contract with, or on their way, they're canceled because we take them out there, so, this is not the right direction to go, now, the chief has told us that we put all this money in last year, the year before we put the money in, and she's telling us that this is not working, so essentially, we're taking a system that's not working, and we're adding some more money to it, okay, fine, it's still not gonna work, we, we know that, if you read the seven, the twenty-four-seven, it explains why we don't have the economies of scale to do this, so, this whole thing needs to get fixed, and not by simply throwing money at it, it's the wrong thing to be doing, and when you look at the cost of these, and you try to balance it out, you also have to remember the benefits that we're paying, when people start to work long hours and get the benefits and such, it costs us money, and will cost us in the future.
Yep.
So we need, we need to get our hands on this, it's not the right thing.
Dick, I think that's worthy of ongoing discussion, as the chief has said, there are changes happening in the private ambulance service industry right now, that are impacting their ability to fulfill some of the contract expectations, and I think at this particular point, we're not gonna solve this before budget time, it's something we need to pay to, pay attention to in the longer term, but.
Could I just ask, with that, the term called firefighter, is that what they are, or are they full-time firefighters, they got, call means they're just on-call, but that's not the model we're using anymore, they're, they're scheduled to come in, or.
You can have qualified, who is scheduled to be on duty, not at their home when they get a tone and can make it or not make it, but they will be at the station, which means they're right next to the equipment to go out, which means faster response.
What's the difference between an on-call firefighter who sits in the station and a regular firefighter?
A full-time employee for the town.
And the others are part-time?
The other ones are, are part-time, they have usually a full-time job somewhere else, and because we don't employ enough firefighters to have twenty-four-seven coverage in the station with our full-time, we rely on, for weekends and evenings, middle of the night, we rely on the qualified fighters to be available to us, so that if you are in an emergency, you're choking, you're having a heart attack, a seizure, whatever it might be, somebody is getting a tone to come in and support that effort.
But they're maybe sitting there, they don't get a call, a tone anymore, they're gonna sit there in the station, which is why the term call is not really that kind anymore.
They will get a tone, but the fact is, they'll be sitting right next to the equipment, as opposed to maybe a town and a half.
Right, which is not on-call, you're actually working part-time in the fire station.
It's called on, it's called a call firefighter, but you are sitting there, ready to go out, and we're paying you while you're sitting.
They are members of the.
It's a part-time.
They are members of the Call Firefighter Union.
Union, which is a different contract.
Which is a different contract, and they are hired sometimes to spend their time in the fire station.
So they're part-time?
They're part-time, full-time employees, but they're still called call firefighters.
Because the union has called that, that was the terminology.
Well, because, because when they're not in the station, they are on-call.
No, they're not anymore.
Well, there's.
That's where she's moving away from.
No, 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 they can be, they can be, absolutely, others can be on-call as well.
I thought you said that was the model that wasn't working.
They're call firefighters because they're not full-time firefighters.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
That's exactly what it is, there's two kinds of call firefighters in concept, two kinds in concept, one is, the person who's at home gets a tone out and responds because it's available.
Which is what we used to do.
Which is the traditional, traditional, there's the second kind, which is, well, you know, that's one, we're hiring people from Raleigh, and from Georgetown, and places like that, who are willing to come in and spend eight hours, twelve hours, whatever it happens to be, as a regular, doing a regular type of firefighter job in the firehouse.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure, I thought that was the model we were moving to, we're not calling anyone at home anymore, now, these are people who are scheduled, they must get in.
Yes, sir, we do indeed, we do indeed have call firefighters to get calls.
Yeah, but she's saying that model isn't working anymore.
I understand that.
Which is, we're moving away from that, just scheduling.
It doesn't work, it doesn't work as well as she'd like it to, but there are some people that still respond.
It's not moving away from, it's filling in to get.
It's not dead.
People there faster, and if you're in the station, you may be cleaning the engine, you may be cleaning turnout gear, you may be running.
I thought that's why she was saying she was moving to this, because she's the only one who's responding.
She wants people in the town.
Yeah, because she can't get enough people, but that doesn't mean the program's dead.
But what happens, if, if the second tone goes out.
It's called.
And, and it's a second alarm, if you're sitting in your home in Raleigh, even though there may be people who've taken the ambulance truck up there, then maybe somebody could drive the ambulance truck and drive one engine, but you still need people to run them, but at least you get the ambulance there, and if it's, as the kind of emergencies you talked about, Kevin, first of all, you get the right people who can handle it, and have EMTs and all this sort of stuff, they're faster, the second is, that if you get the truck to the station, to the fire location, and people go directly to the location, you save all the time to them coming to the station, starting it up, and getting it out to the fire, which adds many minutes.
So it's still a hybrid?
So it's a hybrid model of call firefighting, designed to improve response time, that's the main thing.
I didn't know if this just moved us all the way over to the part-time, or whether it's still a combination.
No, not all the way.
The other thing is, that they call firefighter, if they get toned but don't show up, they don't get paid, a call firefighter who shows up gets paid, if you are sitting in the station, A call firefighter who shows up gets paid. If you are sitting in the station, you're going to get paid for the time you're sitting in the station, even if there isn't a call at that time, that's why this cost is there.
So this is a step up, because we moved from, you don't get paid unless you come in. Right before this, we went to the model of, we are going to pay you just to be sitting at home, ready.
We paid him fifty bucks.
And it didn't work, so that was kind of the interim.
This is the next step of that process not working.
Yeah.
She wants to hire call firefighters that will be at the station.
Yeah, I didn't know if we still hung on to the, we'd be here at home, because we had moved to the other model, which is we pay you to be aware that you're.
You'll still get a call if there's a major incident. You know, we have two people on call, or at the station at, you know, one in the morning on Sunday morning or Saturday morning call, and there's a major fire. I mean, we're going to have mutual aid coming in, we'll have the, you know, the other.
You've got a lot more than two people in certain instances.
I'm sure of that, so, you know, we, this is going to give us that twenty-four-seven coverage in the station so that we can respond quickly in, in the event.
It's a response time thing more than a.
That's what it is.
More coverage, if you will. The coverage sort of remains the same, but the response time during those evening hours, midnight to six AM would be improved.
Anything else on page?
Just have a slide on ambulance stuff. Again, I would encourage anyone who's really interested in trying to understand it, to do, read the fire study committee's report, because it provided some very valuable information. The second thing, and I just gave a copy to Kevin here, was the work that was done to regionalize, to look at regionalizing the ambulance. Because some of the factors, the way they talk about them in there, point out why this model that we have will not work for a town of sixty-six hundred people. It's, it's, we're just shoveling against the tide that we're not going to win. We're going to shovel against the tide, we will provide the right services to the town in the right way. I'll leave it at that.
This should fiddle up, right? Because it doesn't, this give coverage for all the nights twenty-four-seven?
It, it fills it in a way, shall we say, it puts some water in the cup, it doesn't fill it all away. It's not the same as a full-time fire department, it's not the same as a full-time fire staff. There are a lot of ways in which we're evolving. Town insurance rates, in, to some degree, reflect the response times, the kind of coverage that you have, and so on. At Rockport, for instance, there was an all-volunteer fire department.
Yeah, they put two people in the station, even if they were full-time, we wouldn't have more than that.
Whether it's a full-time or it's a call firefighter, sitting at the station is only a function of the difference in what we're paying them to sit there.
Yeah, she's only going to call those, call firefighters to sit at the station when nobody else is there, at night.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there'll be two people in the station, whether you call them call or full-time. That's all she needs now, because now we have twenty-four-seven coverage.
That would give us twenty-four-seven, because there's somebody in the station except for those times.
Except for those times.
The ones that this would then cover.
This would cover.
Right now, we're sort of nine-tenths there. Let's keep moving if we can, please.
Anything on page nine that you'd like to discuss?
Talked a lot about the changes that are in this.
The thing that's extremely hard for me to understand is how Glenn Clooney is shown as having thirty hours when he, when he was working for two different towns, and in Topsfield, he was here Tuesdays and Thursdays from seven AM to one PM. The fact that it's down to eighteen, I don't understand how it's down, I'll buy the fact that eighteen is right because he wound up, again, scaling from seven to one, eight hours, on two days of the week, okay, that is up sixteen, eighteen, it's all in the same category. But how, it was thirty at one point, I just, I cannot get, I cannot understand that, and I said that about a year ago when this thing was first presented, I remember when he came in on it, I said, after the fact, I don't understand how the numbers come out. But I'll buy the fact that eighteen hours is enough for the inspector to do his job.
But we have the monies in there to cover going back up to thirty.
But we're going to add money for all the.
We're adding money for the clerk.
Support service. We'll have the covers to window, and then, not knowing what the outcome is with the sort of trial period, we call it. We want to have the cover, the ability to have somebody come in, if it's appropriate. We realize that Glenn's not being able to cover what he's covering, that this is, the range is not working. It gives us the flexibility. We had a really good conversation with the FinCom about this last night, where they said, we're looking, FinCom was comfortable because Glenn and I are talking about raising the permit fees from ten dollars per thousand to twelve, which will generate potentially excess in what the budget number here is. So if we're generating more revenue by doing that, they felt comfortable with that for the budget purposes, not knowing. This is the worst-case scenario, and as, we're hoping that if, as we assess it, and I get a better understanding of how many permits we're seeing and the capacity we have, if we pull that back down, great, that's, if Glenn decides to move on, or we decide to move on from Glenn, we might pull that back. We say, someone, we assess it over the next few months, and we say, oh my gosh, there's so much activity going on, there's projects. We're not getting to everything in timely fashion, we need somebody to be full-time. Then we make decisions with Diane's position, whether or not it makes sense to maintain that at the hire or take it back. Again, for the FinCom, it was the recognition that there's additional revenues in the horizon that could offset any additional costs by having two full-time people, basically.
The only thing I'd throw out there is that two dollars is a tax increase.
But on people who are. How many people buy permits?
Well, it's enough to cover the additional limits.
Yeah, but you're building a million-dollar house, two dollars on a thousand is a significant amount of money, but it's small in the relationship to the whole thing.
It might be, but it is a tax to cover the increased cost.
It's a selective, it's not, not a regressive tax or.
So the reason behind what we're doing is because, just talking with the communities, we're on the lowest end of what we charge for permits. And so we're looking at, not necessarily tied into the position per se, but looking at, are we comparable to the communities? Same thing with the weather.
Well, he told us last night that all depends around, twelve bucks a thousand.
Twelve or fourteen, okay. And so, but to that, we're going to do a little bit more than just sort of ad hoc assessment of what other communities do, we're actually going to.
Do some more study.
Yeah, so if, if the community does say, oh my gosh, your fee charges two dollars more, yeah, we're now not significantly the lowest, now we're the lowest.
I feel better knowing that we've been undercharging, and that's the reason for raising it, and not so much to offset the increase in trying to push Glenn's position.
That wasn't the discussion last night at all, okay? The discussion last night was, this is something we can do to get us in the right ballpark.
And I would feel comfortable to Nick's point, that we are going to be able to operate within eighteen hours because we've been operating with Glenn serving two towns for years. And so we've probably been getting eighteen hours.
Getting more out of them too. I, I think there's more efficiencies in terms of Glenn's ability to work with Kevin.
I get the impression he's more committed, since he's not committed to West Newbury, he's more committed to us.
Glenn and I have conversations multiple times a week, which is great, because like I said, it's, talked about earlier with the iPads and having connectivity immediately, so we can be efficient in how we operate. We're a business to some extent, right? We represent the community, we might be best by that, but we got to operate sometimes like a business and making sure we're delivering the services.
And that's no slam against Glenn, because if he found a way to get that job done, and someone else would do it in thirty hours, well, that's off to him, but I think we'll be able to do it with eighteen, since he found a way to do it before.
Let's keep going, we're halfway through, we thought it would take us a few minutes.
Oh, but the next one has nothing really.
Anything on page ten? Page eleven? Nope, that's cool, we're going to discuss that. Well, the question was raised at the last meeting about the stormwater management consultant. So we have MS four regulations that are going into play. We are required by EPA to provide documentation annually around our stormwater, and the MS four is going to potentially increase what we want. I spoke with Dave Bond, who is our consultant on this, and I had a conversation about what the real cost would be. He felt comfortable with leaving the ten in there, with some of those MS four additional costs in play. To the earlier conversation that we had Lynn, was that, you know, the actuals weren't really proving that the tens needed, but he felt strongly about it. So, I mean, that's the conversation that we had.
That actually tracks very well with my conversation with folks at M and A around MS four. The fact we're going to see more evidence of MS four compliance issues being enforced than we have in the past.
That was a really good question, because it did look a little upsetting about that number was ten, why it was there. Snow and ice, I mean, that department for the most part is level funded, although we increased the snow and ice by a very nominal amount of twenty-three hundred dollars.
How are we doing this year so far? It's only to, well, Jim.
I'm a little nervous since they allow.
We, we had a very mild winter so far.
We've been in good shape, we started out.
What, what's happening though, we're not plowing as much snow, but we're doing a hell of a lot more salting and sanding because of the ice. We've had, we've had ice issues, but not so much snow issues. So I think we're going to be under the, under the budget this year, okay, but not by much.
Spoken as an optimistic vote commissioner. On to the next.
He should know.
Don't, don't bank on that.
Guess what prediction this is, but don't bank on it.
See what Thursday brings.
Page fourteen.
Page fourteen, nothing. The only thing I'll mention is, we talked about earlier, the one retirement that we know is out there for this next, this will be yours, superintendent position. So the number this budget is the number for the, for Steve, however, he's been in service for quite some time, there is a possibility that goes down. However, he is only at a step eight too, so just keep that in mind. So depending on who fills that position, it might come down, it might be around that.
And the landfill says requesting a little of the seven thousand, although I don't see it reflected here. There was discussion about the fact some additional work being done this year to see whether we could reduce our obligations for ongoing testing now that the landfill has been successful for so long.
Seven thousand represents the PFAST testing. The federal government requires, put a number of, I think, forty parts per billion, perks per trillion for testing. And the state is looking at doing a more restrictive twenty parts per trillion. They don't know, they're going through the public process right now to determine what that threshold will be. They don't know what remediation will look like, but they're going to require testing.